Church.
To the what? Counsel, if you will come to order, it is 7:00 PM and we do have all members of council present have a quorum. Just a minute, I'll ask everyone to stand and we'll be led in invocation by Fire Chief Wade Carroll and then be led in our pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag by Councilmember Greg Lamont. Please stand.
Would you pray with me, Blake? Lord, we thank you so much for today and this, the jobs that you've bestowed upon us, Lord, and our responsibility to lead. We just ask for your guidance in that, God. We ask for your guidance to lead this city, this town, in the direction that would make you proud. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
May be seated. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentation made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items, part of the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. I don't see that anybody turned in a slip to speak. Anybody in the audience wish to address the council at this time? No one? Then I will move on to our announcements and reports. Item number one. Receive the town manager's update from Police Chief Patrick Arata regarding the following. Discussion and provide input regarding the same town hall dedication and a fall family campout. Chief Arata.
Mayor. Mayor, council. The town hall dedication, the grand opening of the town hall will take place on Saturday, November 18th at 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. The ribbon cutting ceremony will be at 1:30. Staff is working with the volunteers to give tours of the new building during that time and light refreshments and small commemorative items will be presented. Fall family campout will be held on November 11th, starting at 3:00 PM. We will have various activities such as archery, scavenger hunt, campfire, wildlife exhibits, and tent decorating. Dinner and breakfast will be served.
All right, any questions of the report? Eric?
Will the council chambers be open by the November 18?
They're coming next Friday, I believe, to start construction of the, to replace everything that was under contract.
So you're hoping so?
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody else have questions? All right, we'll move on to item number two. Receive town council liaison update, discussion of same parcel recreation board. The council liaison is Councilmember Schaffner. Phillip?
I have no update.
All right. And we will...
It was pretty much just direction.
All right. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. Discussions desire, then that item will be removed of consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anybody wish to remove any of the items three through five? Hearing none, I then would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items three through five.
I'll make a motion, we approve consent agenda items three through five.
Second? All right, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Rowe and a second by Councilmember Jensen. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous, it does pass. We'll move on to item six. Consider and take appropriate action regarding ordinance adopting a new subsection 3109.4.1.7 gates to be part of section 3.03.052, amendments of Division Two Building Code of Article 3.03, technical and construction codes and standards of chapter three, building regulations of the Town and Trophy Club Code of Ordinances, and providing an effective date. We have ordinance 2017-28 that someone would move when we are ready to approve. Do we have any report? Yes, Tommy.
Good evening, mayor and council. We were given the direction to try to find a decision or change to the ordinance that would allow for vehicular gates to be used as part of the pool barrier around a swimming pool, whereas we maintain, obviously, the equal to or better than life safety requirements that the code has for protecting a water surface for those that can't, you know, think on their own in that regards. It was difficult, to say the least, and I'm not sure we can come up with one that could not be looked at in another way by another individual. It was stated that they were looking for something that couldn't be reinterpreted, and I'm not sure anything can be written that can't be reinterpreted. And that's why, in lieu of putting language into the code itself, I accepted to go to the exception listed there to allow vehicular gates as long as they met the two criteria with the ASTM standards as well as the UL standard along with it.
All right, anybody have any questions? All right, seeing no one seeking the floor, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2017-28.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2017-28.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim Rowe moved. Councilmember Fleury has seconded. Any further discussion? Or questions, anyone? Hearing none, we'll call for vote. All those in favor, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It does pass unanimously. Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
Item number seven. Town council future agenda item number three, consider and take appropriate action regarding that land that A, the town owns for the responsibility of residents to acquire the land and B, is maintained by the town but not owned. And there's a staff report to that. And council, there is, there has been a request by staff that they still want to look at some of the properties, trying to get better records on some of them, but there's some value in maybe going through it and if you can make a decision about it, we can agree to that decision or if we want more information, at least it can be requested at this time. And Tony, are you going to talk to this?
I can. I'm also here to answer any questions and go through the slides one by one if you, if the council's...
All right. So if you don't mind, council, let's go through the items that are starting on page forty-eight of your packet. The first one is Eagles Ridge and that's picture one A. And so the only question I had about it was, it wasn't clear to me as to who owns the eagle at the end of this.
Correct. And I met with the residents at 200 Ridgeview Lane and that's their, that was their number one question as well.
He owns it if he owns the land.
Correct.
Just like the mud owns that building over there.
Well, my understanding from past history of memory is that the eagle was given to the town. So if it was given to the town, we need to determine if that's the case or not. So I don't, I don't know. There was no homeowner association to give it to, and so that got really confusing. That was back in somewhere between 2005 and 2009 when I was mayor before. I just remember that big issue coming up. So from my perspective, we just need to clear the issue with the eagle. It obviously is own, property owned by the person, but...
Correct. Yeah, that, he did request for a letter from the town if he is going to take over that flower bed with the eagle that the town recognizes.
Eric, comment?
My comment would be is it's his land, he owns the eagle.
I just, I just ask that we clarify and make sure that we document exactly that fact. I don't want him to sell his house later and then somebody come up with another question later.
I, I gotta say, I'm surprised he wants to keep it. If there was anything on this report that I would have thought we would be on the hook for surveying and replating, it would have been this one because it's a neighborhood monument and, I mean, it's, it's not an insignificant piece of stuff, so, you know, I...
Is there an HOA over there now? There's no.
And as long as I live there, there never will be. So, yeah. I guess since he owns it, if he intends to continue to own it, then that pretty much settles it unless someone else comes in.
So is his property land actually included?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I will say this. There is a piece of land at the neighborhood entrance, really right adjacent to that, that the town does own outright. That's ours, that other piece right across.
Correct.
Skyline.
Yes, across the street, right?
Yeah, to the right. So if it became an issue with the monument in the future, the town could always move the monument to town, to the land we own. Because most neighborhood monuments are either owned by the HOA or by the town anyway, so we kind of have a fallback plan.
I have no objection to it being something maintained by the homeowner. I just want it clearly given to him if that's the case.
Yeah.
So that we don't, ten years from now, somebody questioned this. All right, go ahead, Phillip.
So am I reading that right, that to, just to maintain that piece of property, it's for park staff members on a weekly basis, two and a half hours, is that what? Requiring approximately two and a half man-hours per cycle.
That includes the, the property Councilmember Rowe was talking about.
Okay, so it's not just that piece of property?
Correct.
Okay. The right-of-way on Village Trail and Trophy Lake Drive is the next item on the next page. Church owns the land and the church is willing to pick that up.
So you're going, are you going by the slides, not the...
I'm going by the written document. The written document, because that was in order.
Which, which page are you on?
Forty-nine of the staff report.
What are you looking at? Oh, okay, so they jumped from Eagles Ridge to...
Okay. So, clear cut, any comments on this one? All right, so no comments on the right-of-way Village Trail Trophy Lake Drive issue. The next one is Medlin Cemetery. And the, the unique thing here and maybe some direction would be is that the Medlin Cemetery Association would be willing to somehow negotiate if the town wanted to somehow take over the entire cemetery. But other than that, there's a document that defines that we're taking care of the front portion of it.
You know, I'll jump in on this one. My father-in-law is a funeral director and so I've gotten a baptism in funerals, which I never thought I would know a lot about. And, and I, you know, the one thing that he has always said, you never want to have a cemetery that has headstones. You want to have it that has...
Flat.
Flat. So you can mow.
Yeah.
So I'll just say I have no, I have no desire to own a cemetery.
I'm happy to see that we found the, the document that delineates our responsibility. To me, the fact that we have that document in, in place means that there's no ambiguity and we can consider it a closed matter, I mean, in my opinion, and just continue to do what the document dictates, you know?
I agree with that thought and I don't have any interest in it becoming part of the town, the cemetery being part of the town.
No.
You know, I will say this. I have a little bit of problem, not so much, I agree that the document there is a bad deal. It didn't, it never came before council. It was, it was decided on by, obviously, a town manager, you know, and the cemetery. You know where I have the problem, and I'm going to have the same problem with the woods, is that that piece of land is taken so much pristine care of and the woods, the entrance is taken, it looks better than our town hall. I mean, it is that, even the eagle, very well taken care of and, and it's, the problem I have is that there are other pieces of property that the town actually owns that doesn't get that type of TLC. And so I don't know if it's, if we're better to kind of downscale some of that maintenance and make it more, what's the word that you're saying? Zero-scape. And not so much labor intensive, because I would imagine that if you, if you drive by that piece of property, which is beautiful, you drive by where the eagle's at, which is beautiful, you drive by the woods, very immaculate. I mean, flowers, landscaping, and things like that. And I'd much rather see pieces of property that we actually own maintained better than pieces of property that we don't own.
All right. So the Medlin Cemetery piece, no interest has been expressed by council to acquire the property and right now it's documented that we take care of it. All right, we're back to, the reason the report is somewhat different is this is maintenance of town-owned property that could be transferred. So now we've changed from property that we're maintaining that we don't own to property that we own, but we're maintaining and maybe could be transferred. So Eagles Ridge located, there's 12,000 feet. And when I looked at that map of that piece, I think the 12,000 is both pieces, is that right?
That's correct, sir.
And so I just, I couldn't really tell topography or what was the reason for it not to have a home on it, at least the one on my right.
It was an open, open space dedication on, when the neighborhood was built.
So it just became open space. It is, it's considered parkland, which would require a vote of the people to turn it into something else, but it, if we're not going to build a park there, putting up $400,000 home there is not a bad deal if it could fit. I just don't know if it could fit, but that's just my comment about it.
Well, the reason this even showed up on the list, I believe, is because it, I think, it, well, obviously, it's dedicated, open space, but I think the ownership was still listed as Beck Properties or one of his companies. So technically speaking, we should take some action to attempt to have the land, the ownership transferred since obviously two of us.
It's not listed. It's listed as Beck owning it.
Well, this says that, oh, that's Fox Point, never mind, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do own the, right, yeah, forty yards that way, we own it. Or not even forty, it's adjacent, it's right there where that curved fence is. So...
So we're still, we're talking about Eagles Ridge, those two pieces that are in front of us on the map. If it's...
Yeah, it's owned by Beck Properties Trophy Club LP.
Both sides?
Yes. But, I mean, it, that's, that's just a clerical problem. Obviously, when, when development was completed, it should have been just handed over.
If the parkland dedication was made to the town, then it's the parkland.
Or open space.
So does the plaque show it?
Do we think might have been done and it just wasn't ever recorded properly?
Probably, yeah. This would go back to 1996 or '97 probably.
So I think it's council wishes to correct the recording if it's wrong and make sure that we're right as to deal with it and then we can explore...
I would like to make sure that that is the actual case, that it was supposed to be dedicated to the town, because I don't want to go to Beck and say, we're trying to take this piece of land and as parkland, I mean, it's morass as it is, so please...
It's open space on the plaque.
Right, but, yeah, just want to make sure we dot all our...
Open space could be HOA space.
Cross our Ts.
There's no way, Joy.
I know. Open space could be just open and not necessarily dedicated to the town.
Right, and...
Right, that's what I want to make sure that it was previously dedicated.
It should be.
All right. So a little more research there and we can...
Neither of these can be, neither of these can be built on, have a structure built on them based on the zoning.
And both, both have walls, correct, Roland?
Yes.
All right. So then the next photo is 3B, which is Fox Point, which is close to that area. And again, these are too small to do much with and we're maintaining them.
So question, in the PD, does it spell out how we maintain them? I get mowing, but...
These aren't PDs.
These aren't PDs.
These are straight residential zoning R-12. And this is squared away. We own it, we take care of it, there's really nothing to talk about.
Unless you wanted to get rid of it.
No. And give it to who?
Ah, yeah, I understand. Not sure anybody would want it.
My question goes back to zero-scaping. Do we have to change out the flowers? How often do we change out the flowers?
This, this particular, this median right here, there's only a flower tip here at the, right at the tip of the median. So that's about two to three flats.
And I don't have a problem. If we own it, make it look nice.
Right, yeah.
You know, it's, it's the properties we don't own that we're maintaining better than the properties we own.
All right. Any other questions or direction on Fox Point? All right, next one is the woods, which is 4A.
So my apology, it was on this one, I just jumped ahead of one. Changed the page.
So, so...
Is it, is it a PD on this one?
Nope.
Okay, so how many times do we change out the flowers and issues like that? I get mowing aside, it's difficult for them to do it.
Right.
But we maintain the entrance weekly.
Correct. We do biannual change outs for color annuals at these flower beds here at the corners right at the entrance.
Is that just, we do that on our own? Is there anything in writing that we're required to do that?
No, we do that on our own.
Photo zero-scaping or maybe they do it on their own?
And I think the water is the same water that's doing the entire lot area across the, along the street.
So I have a question about this. On what, on, on what basis are we saying that, that this was CIA property? Because it's not separately platted. It's not its own parcel. So on what basis are we pulling in the CIA?
Yeah, and that's the document I want to see is that one.
From the CIA house?
Right. I want to know if we own that, because we're just saying, we're just saying that it was, you know, CIA property, TCCIA, and now, I mean, where's the document that shows that?
It's not.
Well, that's, that's owned by the...
The homeowner.
The homeowner, because we have to get their signatures when we want to put signs up there.
Yeah.
Correct. I was just going to let y'all know that.
Oh, thank you.
So you guys are right before me. Yeah, their property goes all the way to the right of way.
See, here's the problem. I don't want this piece of property, because if we all of a sudden take ownership and say, oh, the CIA gave it to us without any proof, then all of a sudden the wall falls apart, that's going to be on us. And I don't want anything to do with walls.
Well, I used to live at the corner and I went through the issue of the fact that my property line went past the wall. And yet it became difficult and it wasn't hooked into my sprinkler system and the electricity for the lighting was a separate meter. So it was, which also ran the sprinkler system. So it became a complicated deal for all of us and when we looked at trying to transfer it, it would require us to replat the lots and file with Denton County. And what they told us at that time is you'd have to have resurveyed. So now you're talking about more expense. It's not just filing a plat, I got to do a survey on it, get that filed with a replat and there's an expense involved in it. So nobody wanted to deal with it appropriately at that time.
So we pay for the watering along the whole mowing area and the entrance ways?
That's correct.
Yep.
Now, here's the thing about this. This was developed and everything at the same time as Eagles Ridge and this is just like the eagle. We have neighborhood monuments and what amounts to common area that were platted in with the residential lot. So to me, this is the same as the, as the eagle. The only difference is these folks aren't saying, I'll keep the eagle. These folks are saying, it's the things we get into. Are y'all wondering why y'all are, I mean, like, is this like Bizarro World to y'all? Anyway, so, but for this one, these folks, like when you live there, Nick, it's kind of like, man, why do I have to deal with this? It's not really even my property. So the proper thing to do is to survey and replat, but what's, what's it going to cost to replat five properties and survey? Yeah, what's the point? Yeah.
But I, okay, so we need to find out what that cost is, because go ask the mud what it just cost them to tear that wall down, fix their line, and rebuild that wall. It was expensive, very expensive.
But they chose to do so because there was some debate about the water line being out of the easement.
But it wasn't.
So we need to have an ironclad agreement that we do not own that wall and we will not be...
See, that's why I'm saying if we...
...charge of repairing that wall.
If we replat...
If it was never dedicated to us or we never built it, would just...
It's on their property, so we, that's, that's your ironclad.
Either HOA or...
Okay, but we're mowing their lawn and we're doing every...
We're mowing it out of the kindness of our heart because we're such sweet people.
And Rich loves us.
Yeah.
All right. So, so the issue is Phillip is requesting, could we look at the cost of, you know, surveys and plating and compare that to what our cost is for maintaining it? At least to have an informed decision.
Well, no, no. If, if, if we are certain that that wall is not going to cost us down the road, then I'm okay with what we're doing. But I don't want to get into a situation where the third home, the wall collapses and they say, well, you've been maintaining it, it's your side, it's your wall, you know...
Have you ever done any work on the wall?
The mud has.
Or you ran a truck into it.
The mud, the mud did some work on it because they didn't want to pay the cost to see who owned it. They, there was a squabble between who owned it.
Well, if, if the right thing to do is to replat it, it's, it's worth saying, getting a cost of what it is and saying to the homeowners, if you, if this is affordable, you pay to do this and we will then mow your lawns in perpetuity on the side of the wall. If not, we're going to have you do it. I mean, and make it win-win for both of us. We shouldn't just say and, and leave ourselves hanging out there. I think it, it might be worth, I don't, I don't know what kind of money it costs to do it, but we should look at it and at least get a cost.
The appropriate thing would be to have a handle on what it would cost in the event that this situation presented a risk in the future, we'd be able to pull the trigger to...
I'm not concerned about a risk of the wall, I think that's documented.
Well, financial risk.
If they, if, if the wall is on their land, then, and it falls down for any reason, that's not my issue. And it's, from my standpoint, I'm not sure going through the, the aspect of survey and plating, those kind of things is worth it, but...
Well, I'll tell you my thought process on that is if I'm the homeowner and you tell me you're going to mow my lawn and then you're not elected anymore and four years from now you say, I'm not going to, now I'm going through it. So on the other side, it makes sense for us to go through and, and make it a legal binding contract to say, you know, this is now our land and we'll take care of it. So if it's not too expensive, I don't know, that's...
Okay.
Another option is...
You can mow my lawn too while you're doing it, write down on 2218 Abbey Lane.
To do what?
To maintain it.
Who?
A pit, for that community, that little neighborhood to create a pit, that's another option.
Or on HOA.
Yeah, it's, it's...
I don't think it's a public improvement.
You know, the thing about it is, you've, you were maintaining, we're spending taxpayer dollars to main, to maintain those, that entrance and we do that for nobody else in town. So when they go into their little community, they see these nice flowers, beautiful landscape. Nobody does that for Edgemere, either, either into Edgemere. So that's the problem I have, is that we're spending taxpayer...
I thought you did that. You planted flowers out the bridge.
But, but you don't, I mean, we do that for nobody. We don't do it for the lakes HOA, we don't do it for Turnberry's HOA, we do it for nobody but the woods. And we have no, there's no little document that, you know, we took their field dirt and we decided to do it forever. So that's the problem I have.
Anybody object to getting some more detail about what the cost might be in having a conversation with the homeowners?
No.
All right, is that clear?
Due diligence.
Yes, sir.
Do our due diligence and have a conversation and deal with it. All right, the right-of-way on Indian Creek, which is 4B.
I suggest a question on the next three.
It's the same kind of thing, but the fence...
Homeowner property.
It's all across the back of, back or side of their yard.
So who, who, on the other side of the wall from the lakes, do we maintain that? The, the wall on Trophy Club Drive?
Which, your fault.
Grass?
So it's, it all depends. If you live in an HOA, the town won't maintain it, but if you don't, oh, the town's going to stay down.
Who maintains the land by lakes, the brick wall by the lake?
HOA.
HOA does. Well, Hogan's Glen, Hogan's Glen, we maintain everything outside.
Yeah, this, these are again privately, or these are all part of private property. But in this case, they are wooden fences and I would say at least half of them have a gate.
No, I mean...
Yeah.
Some of them have a gate.
That one at the end of Cypress is a long fence. There's no gate there.
That, no, that one doesn't, but there's a couple that do.
So a question on the, the next three. It says, private contractor. Is there a reason for that? Special equipment? We don't, we don't do it in-house?
No, we don't do it in-house. That's just a, uh, part of the contracting that we've been, um, cutting down on maintenance for, for the guys who pick up, uh, other pieces of property in town.
And I don't believe there's any sprinkler system along there, is there?
No, no, sir.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it doesn't grow as much. It becomes more weed than it does grass.
It's on a twenty-one cycle per year.
All right, so would this be one that you want to look at? Do we know if their land goes to the curb?
It does.
It does.
And we have no, there's no prohibition on a gate, correct? So they can put a gate up and get on that piece of property? Yeah, that's, that's a little different, because it's not a wall. You could easily put a gate. One fence looks like, uh, they came to my pallet company one night and took pallets. It's just a pallet piece. So, uh, you know. Yeah, though.
All right, so direction on that is, um, if it is sure their property, we need to move down the line with finding out what's the cost of plating and dealing with it appropriately. All right, uh-
Have them take care of it.
Well, this one doesn't have, I mean, there's no power, there's no watering, there's no flower beds.
So it's just, we need to make sure they're aware, they're responsible to mow?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I guess we can give them the option of paying whatever, whatever the price. We'll maintain it for whatever your percentage of that one thirty-five is.
So the decision that says town staff will continue to maintain all town property is because it was outside of their fence?
That's correct. We, yes. So we were, what we've been told in the past is if they don't have any access to the right of way, the town was responsible.
All right, so then the Lakes Trail is the next item, five A.
Move that council member Fleury to take care of all that property since it's adjacent to her home.
This, this is actually, look at this, Roland. I think this is platted, uh-
That's a trail.
The, the HOA property and not town.
It is. I've looked at it. I'll, I'll check it. I'll get over here and check it again, but I believe that is the case.
Is that in that HOA?
Is that done by an agreement?
Several people.
Once again, I sent them the condemnation, whatever they call it.
Yeah, this is one that, this is one that back in two thousand or two thousand and one, or whenever that was, when there was the Texas Park and Wildlife and all this stuff that went on to acquire a grant, blah, blah, blah. I'm telling y'all stories from when I was in college and didn't even live here, but anyway, um, we own that. Where we, we, we took ownership. Denton County's wrong, or well, we, we probably didn't file.
And just personal, it, that was a classic mistake on a part of the town.
Taking over a liability, yeah, or a financial liability. Um, so, yeah, my recommendation on that one, if there's no objection, would be that we, um, attempt to correct the, the property filing with the Prail District on that one to make sure that it shows that it's ours, because it's part of our trail system.
Part of that Texas Parks and Wildlife grant?
I think it was related, yeah. No one referred to that.
It was, because it, that's, that's about the same time we took over the creek as well. So it was, it was together.
But that's not, the other part along the lake is-
Yeah, that's right.
Is it part of that same thing?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, continued.
Right here, down here.
But that whole thing down there, they took, that was part of it. That was part of it also.
So why did they do that and not continue on?
Just, they went all the way to Lake Shore. See, but the, that whole row of houses. Can you go, no, I can't go further.
No, I'm talking about your house. Why did they not take that and cross over it?
That I don't know. That I don't know.
It's kind of odd.
So if there was this, uh, condemnation agreement?
It, it was a judgment.
It was a judgment?
We filed, uh, the town filed eminent domain. It may have been an agreed judgment, but I thought it was just for an easement. Uh, it's been a while since-
A recreational easement. I believe you're correct.
They still own it. We have an easement over it.
No. Then you can start mowing it.
Easement and ownership are two different things.
I know.
It's, it's ownership.
That's one we need to look into.
Yeah.
We'll correct, look back at it again, but it's been about a year since I read it.
That's an expensive sidewalk that's-
I know.
All right.
Trust me.
So that says, let's make sure before we deal with it, if we really do own it and it's not an easement, then it's ours, right?
And we'll correct the record if so.
And we just need to correct the record. All right, uh, next one is the lot on Sonora Drive, page five B for the diagram.
I just need to make a correction on this one. Uh, there was a resident that was interested in either transfer or for sale.
Okay.
This one is, uh, odd too, because the only way that you know that that piece of property, uh, is not those houses on either side is to go to the plat, but the Denton County shows no town ownership of that piece of property on their maps. You have, you definitely have to go to the plat to see that.
So if Denton, then we need to correct the Denton County filing, if that's correct. But if somebody's interested in acquiring it, then-
Why do we think it was transferred to us?
Uh, it's, it's listed that way on the plat. I have no idea why we've continued to maintain it. If you look on, on Denton CAD on the map, it shows those properties butted up to each other. Roland will probably see it here when he looks at the map. There's no, there's no town ownership listed.
This, this is, um, this track is part of the CIA transfer to us, um, back in two thousand and two. So we've, we've looked at several historical documents that show that the track of land that this is associated with, it's not associated with either, either property. Um, so we'd like some more time to do some research on the records and get this straight before we come back to you with, with a recommendation on this one. Because there are additional pieces that we might want to mention to you.
Yeah, so Denton County's actual map shows that it's a part of forty-three Sonora.
Yeah.
But I'm going to pull up the plaque, because you're saying the plaque shows otherwise.
That shows it like that. I, I would have protested if I was that owner.
Yeah, he might be paying extra taxes on that little seven thousand square feet or whatever it is.
It's huge.
Oh, is that y'all?
That's when we bought our survey, because we just bought that piece of property.
Oh.
When we bought, when we bought that piece of property, we inquired about it. As prior to us purchasing that property, the fence wasn't aligned on that side.
Would you come up to the microphone so we can get your comments, if you don't mind? And will you state your name and your address so we get that on the record, please? Forty-three Sonora.
Screen.
Tenisha Chavez, and I'm at forty-three Sonora Drive. Um, so we just recently purchased that property. We purchased it on July thirty, thirty-first. Um, and when we did, when we were inquiring and when we were, um, moving to Trophy Club and looked at this property, we inquired about that land, um, next to it, and the realtor and my realtor pulled surveys and got in contact with everybody, and they said it wasn't owned by us, because we were inquiring about it to want to know if it was going to be part of our land and what our tax rolls would be. And our survey doesn't state anything of that nature. And then when you go and you see the square footage of it, it's like the home is on ten thousand square feet, but if it had that extra five thousand, then it would be fifteen thousand. So it could be interpreted different ways, and I guess it's, it is. It's, when I, when we received the letter, we called and inquired about it, because we were wanting to know who owned it, because it, the grass stays high, and everybody else's grass is nice and trimmed.
Yeah. Would you mind letting us see that survey real quick? I just want to see. I'm a visual learner. I apologize.
We appreciate you coming tonight.
So-
You want the land, right?
Not sure. It might cost you. Property taxes, okay.
Yes, and that's the other thing, is that there, there were some questions for us, because it's the property taxes. Who's going to survey it? Who's going to replat it to where it is in our name? That, those are some of the questions that we had, um, because there would be expense either on the city or an expense on us, or is it an expense that we say, okay, here's the expense, and we divide it? So.
I'm pulling up the plat.
If it's a platted lot, you can just transfer the platted lot and not have to survey it.
Yeah, I'm pulling the plat right now.
And that's the other thing, because if it's then just transferred to us as, as a piece of land, then how do we file that with the city, with the county? And then we pay separate taxes on it?
The deed would be filed.
It, that's what I was thinking. It would be cheaper for us to have two separate, instead of rolling it into the structure of the house.
So the plat-
And value of the house.
Establish it as a culture.
So I've pulled up the, I've pulled up the plat, um, and on the plat, that little piece, the little red thing we have on the screen?
Correct.
It goes, and actually, on the plat, it's the same parcel as all of the stuff by, up against the sound wall.
So it goes, which bottom right corner goes all the way down?
Both of them. They're all the same. So, and that goes back to the late eighties, um, so, so, so what that, from the town perspective, what that means is that that little sliver is similar to what we would say used to be CIA.
In the back of-
And what, so does that mean that, uh, the land between the sound wall and their property line is no one can get to, and so it's in no man's land?
No, they're, they're good there. The survey actually incorporates some of what you see in this picture, but the, the track that the CIA, uh, labeled as Track F goes along the sound wall, and the sound wall actually cut a lot of the property out, but there are additional lots down the street that did the same thing, where they moved their fence to the sound wall and, and took some of that track that was turned over to us. So that's why we'd like some more time to research that.
Yeah.
But this particular piece is, is now cut off by itself, and it, um, stands alone.
All right, uh, so Ms. Chavez, thanks you for coming tonight. You're in your husband. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll continue to try to work on this and try to solve the issues and keep you informed.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, so, uh, the council looks like we need to just make sure we got everything documented and then deal with it appropriately.
We'll come back with more information.
All right. Uh, lot south of twenty-eight seventy-six and twenty-eight seventy-seven, Milson's Point Drive.
I have a recommendation on these two.
All right.
Um, in talking with Mr. Class, Tony, and Tommy, and everybody else, these properties back onto the core property, we would like to hold, uh, a decision on these until after we talk to the core regarding the Loop Road. Mr. Class has a meeting set up with them soon, and this may be something that we can offer up as a trade if we need some of their land. So, as a recommendation, but we've done some homework. The homeowners are interested in some of this or all of this property. So they have commented that, yeah, we'd take it if you gave it to us. Um, they'd have to meet all of our ordinances, so to fence it with wrought iron fencing, et cetera, et cetera.
So that homeowner wanted all that right there?
Well, he said he'd take all of it, but then again, depending on what he would have to do with the property, I think he would maybe slice some of that down.
He'd be willing to take less, he said.
Yeah. How much do you maintain back there? You don't maintain a lot back there, do you?
Uh, we maintain just the here.
Right. That's, that's the, that's, that's what I was interested in, that other part. Uh, that's a, you know, that'd be nice, but, yeah, just the part that we maintain is what.
So-
This is a little trail through there somewhere. I see one on the left and one on the right.
This is the, um, dog, this is, uh, the dog park here.
Okay.
This is the swell.
So per the DCAD map, this is, the DCAD map says that this is all part of the parcel that the dog park sits on. Does the plat say otherwise? Is one of those things where the plat doesn't match the map?
No, it, oh.
Yeah, this, this is back right into the floodplain of the, the park.
Yeah.
But it's fenced off, so the dog park stops, and we have to go back there and maintain that section behind those two houses. The HOA does behind the houses and the core property going north.
They maintain this section right here.
We have a slither that goes all the way.
Oh, and that little, it's a little narrow, like ten foot.
And why they didn't get that part, I don't know.
Drive you crazy.
So it was, so the intention was just those part that we have to physically go back there and maintain for these, you know, because we own it, uh, that's the part that, to me, is just wasted property. We should just try to, you know, turn it over to those residents if they want it.
All right.
Maintain it.
So more research is happening there, and we're, see how our meeting goes with the core if we want to be able to swap land, okay?
Yeah, that would be much better.
Uh, lot on Trophy Club Drive, uh, map is on page seven.
This resident also, uh, expressed some interest in this, uh, piece of property, and he has the same questions everyone else does. Uh, does he have to meet ordinances? Uh, what will he be allowed to, to do and not to, you know? He's wanting to put a fence up at the, at the front of it and whatnot, so he's got questions as well, but he's, he's definitely interested as well.
So it's the homeowner to the, right, right there?
To the north, yeah.
Another comment, Mayor?
Yes, Eric.
Something I've noticed on each one of these is staff comment says, considered to be of limited or no value. I disagree. Land always has value for the, especially because they don't make it anymore. So, there's value.
How big is that lot?
It's, it's not very big.
I think he-
Twelve thousand square feet.
Are we mowing that, or is just-
No, wait a minute. Yeah, yeah, that's twelve thousand.
Park staff's mowing it.
We are mowing it?
Yes.
So let me, will we need any of that when we expand, when we put a bridge there at some point? Because that's, that's where we're wanting to put a bridge eventually at some point. So are we going to need any of that for culverts? Are we going to need any of, because I don't want to go back later and say, oh, now we need some of this land.
We'd have easement.
Yeah, yeah, so-
But if you transfer, keep it now. Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, yeah, what I'm saying is make sure, maybe we need to get with Teague, Nolan, Perkins, because I think they had that designed on how many culverts they needed, probably how wide they needed it.
That's designed, and that would have elevated the road.
Right.
Uh, from the creek down past Meadow Creek, all of that, I think, just changed grades significantly.
If the, um, if, if the homeowner, if the homeowner was wanting to own this, it, since it's separate parcel, it'd be easy to transfer, but we would want to, we would want to, uh, add an easement to that transfer to make sure we were covered for the drainage portion.
Because, because this, that's not a matter of, if, or, or, you know, that's when we're going to do it, because, uh, as Westlake develops, you're going to get a lot more water coming through there, and at some point, you're going to be forced to, to put that in. And we, we ran into that situation on Indian Creek where the homeowner refused to give us an easement. We went to court, we lost, and so we don't want to make that same mistake.
All right. That takes us to, uh, page fifty-one, which is the Gaswell Side adjacent to the Highlands, which is a drawing on page eight. Or, is that right? Maybe it's drawing eight, yeah.
I don't think you can do anything with that.
So this is, this is currently a part of the same parcel as all the linear park and everything, correct?
Yep.
That we own? Okay. So is there homeowners that are interested in? Because to me, this is just our responsibility unless someone came begging for us to give it to them, right?
We didn't reach out to any homeowners, just because it's really undesirable land.
Yeah.
Lot of slopes, and you got that pond there that never really stays full.
Okay, so no action on that one, looks like, right? All right, so what, uh, we've kind of gone through all of those and given some direction. Um, obviously, this item will come back to us, except in cases where you can proceed with trying to see if there's some transfer available.
Let me just, I just make one comment, since I brought this up. We, we may want to check with the homeowner at Creekmere and Indian Creek by the creek, because that's, that's the homeowner that, uh, wouldn't give us an easement. But we, we put five culverts in, but one of them is blocked, so we only have four culverts right now. That homeowner has moved, and so there's a new homeowner there that may be more amenable to, to work with us so that we can open up that fifth culvert.
Yeah, the address on that is, sorry. Thirty-one Creekmere.
Yeah, so we may just want to reach out.
The, the prior owners, I guess we didn't want to, the originally, you, you guys were on council, so the town made an offer. They rejected the offer, and then the town tried to, uh-
Right.
Not eminent domain, but condemnation of that slice, and it didn't work, so.
And we lost.
So from my perspective, uh, although it, it will be a little harder to probably accomplish, Holly, uh, if you can delineate on this item number seven, each one of them, and any recommendation council made that you could glean from that. And then I know Philip can read it, and whoever else can read the minutes, and we'll try to at least get this documented better.
Yeah.
So, I, I think it'll be well worth knowing what the issues were, not that they won't change, but at least get it documented. All right, anything else? Anybody has anything on item seven? Hearing none, we'll move on to eight. Receive an update from town staff regarding entry monumentation and landscaping. Uh, and we do have a staff report. We do have a sample RFP, uh, and a recommendation. John?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, so I'd say I'm here to ask to actually set some dates to get the entry monumentation, um, subcommittee to meet and discuss the RFP. We've talked in previous council meetings about narrowing down the scope, and so I'd like to, to get with them, meet, narrow down that direction exactly what they want on there, so we can bring this back to council, get it out for a bid, and, um, then start reviewing those applicants as they come in.
So are you asking that the subcommittee narrow the scope, or that we narrow the scope tonight?
The subcommittee, so I'd like to set a date and time for the subcommittee to meet.
And to John's, to John's credit, he sent an email.
Yeah.
I kept waiting to see what Roland and Tim said, so I didn't email back.
Raise your hand if you called me today and went to voicemail. I think like five of y'all, I've been, it just, I've been slammed, so it's all on me.
I don't want on the same topic.
I think we wanted you to put some, uh, times together, and then we'll, we'll pick one.
Just throw something out there, yeah.
I got a couple of comments about the document.
Yes, sir.
So.
Let's pour those to the subcommittee, please.
If you, I'll be happy to just email them if you want me to do that, unless somebody wants to hear what those comments are.
That's fine.
That'll be good, man.
They're just little bitty tweaks that I thought, if, if I was looking at it from an RFP, I would want to.
We'll take your, uh-
All right, so, uh, staff will, uh, you're going to transition this project?
Yes, so in the future, I'll be transitionist to Lisa. Um, I've worked on this project since it originally went out to bid and came back. It wasn't mine, uh, to start with, but it was, um, her background benefits this, and she's able to tell whether someone's submitting a proposal, whether they have feasible architectural standards or not, and whether those would actually fit in the places that we want them to. And, um, yeah, she's just got a better background in this.
So just circle back with her and then get times and dates that work for you guys, and we'll pick one.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Anybody else have questions? All right, we'll move on then. Uh, no- No official action other than just saying move forward with give some dates. Item nine, discussion of items for future agenda, including agenda items for consideration on the November 4th council agenda and items from the town council future agenda list. Council page 79 gives the temp, the estimated agenda for our November 14th meeting. Anybody have anything that they want to point out here or add to this agenda? All right, hearing none, then you'll go to page 80 and 81. I guess if you look at 81, page 81, item number three, we've kind of dealt with that issue, I think that could come off this list, Lisa, it's going to come back to us as you work through what was done. Right, anybody disagree with that? And Eric, I didn't know about how soon you wanted to try to deal with the Veterans Memorial or not, so it's just sitting there unless you're trying to move it forward in some fashion. No? Okay.
I have an update for November 14th, since we won't have that second meeting in November, if you're okay with that, or I can push it to December.
I'll push it.
Push it.
December.
What'd he said?
You just.
All right, and so then the other item was Ryland that put on, dealt with sales tax based on House Bill 157. David, are you looking at that?
Yes.
Item number six, is something to be done?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
No, I can do it.
Yeah, and to be, to be clear, let's make sure that that also includes the fact that we have some action to take one way or another, because we've got different, I guess, streets and drainage and CCPD are, need to be re-upped or whatever, so.
So the only other issue, and I haven't had a chance to, to see if we're supposed to do something, but tree ordinances came under attack at the last legislation, and wouldn't be surprised me that January 1 thing's going to affect that change that. So we need to look and see how that affects us.
Can, also on.
Things did change based on what action the legislature took, I just don't know if they affected us. Yes?
On item five, can we do that sort of the same way that we did with the pool latches? Just bring it to us, let us just kind of see what other cities are, discuss it, and then go back, and then, that's the turf, artificial turf, okay.
So the request is, get us a little more data on that, put it on the agenda, then we can give some direction. And I think from my standpoint, I think it's a worthwhile idea, and from my standpoint, if we're going to discuss it, it'd be nice to see, is there an area that staff felt like might be an appropriate test?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's kind of where I am on it, is it seems like it might be a good idea, but the true test will be if we actually implemented it.
Yeah.
Yes, come to the microphone, Tony.
I was able to find a vendor that's willing to donate a small portion to the town as a sample, up to 500 square feet, so, the only thing would be location, so the only thing I thought, the best location for that would be one of the cul-de-sac, or the medians in the cul-de-sacs off of Indian Creek right here by Brook Hollow, probably would be one, or anything past that.
I got a little place in my front yard that won't grow grass at all.
Got a lot of people with, under the tree, they have, you know.
I, I do have to add, though, in exchange for that, they're requiring the labor to get it prepped for them, and then they'll come back behind us, and then, which is pretty minimal, so.
Yeah.
Just wanted to add that.
All right, so just look at that and be able to bring it back at some point.
Do we have any that have trees, any of those cul-de-sacs that have trees or anything? It'd kind of be nice to see that under trees.
We do have, well, Lake Forest would be one.
Okay.
That's heavily, it's a lot of trees there, but it's a lot bigger. I can get a quote from them to see if they can add the 500 square feet.
No, that's, that's okay, I just didn't know if there was one that had a tree or something.
No, just Lake Forest.
Okay.
Thank you, Tony. All right, any other comments on item nine? All right, if not, we're going to go into executive session in a minute as soon as I read this. Pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. Section 551.071, consultation with attorney under subsection two, to consult with the attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under Texas Department of Rules of Professional Conduct to the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act specifically pending litigation. Item B, section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property to discuss or deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person, and section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations under subsection two, to discuss or deliberate the offer or financial or other incentives to a business prospect that the town seeks to have locate within the territory of the town, north of Highway 114, east of Trophy Club Drive, Councilmember Shoffner could put it there, and then item C, section 551.074, personnel matters to discuss or deliberate appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Parking Recreation Board will be looked at in its appointments, and the Planning and Zoning Commission and its appointments. It is 7:56, and we are in executive session. Council will come to order, we will reconvene into regular session at 8:13 PM. Item number 11, consider and take appropriate action repealing Resolution 2017-24 and adopting a new resolution, making appropriate appointments on the park and rec board, reaffirming existing appointments, chairperson, and council liaison, and providing an effective date. Resolution 2017.33, or dash 33, and I will recognize Councilmember Jensen for a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-33, appointing Joel Morris to Place 3, reaffirming existing appointments, chairperson, and council liaison.
Second.
And, all right, so question, was Jacob already appointed?
He was, I probably should have done the other one first, but, so.
Replacing?
Replacing Jacob Gibson, Place 3, with Joel Morris.
Second. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. All right, item 12, consider and take appropriate action repealing Resolution 2017-25 and adopting